I'd like to thank everybody for arriving tonight. We're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
For roll call, we have all members present except for Bob. Bob will be a little bit late, so he'll jump right in this seat as soon as he gets here. Give him like 15, 20 minutes. So we're going to go to the executive session. We had an executive session today at 7:20 in the room number two to discuss personnel. And I don't have any public comment. If anybody would like to make a public comment? In the scene, no? Okay, we're going to roll right into the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Vors up and help him introduce our guest here tonight and have an opportunity to talk more about some text-dependent analysis. Mr. Vors?
Thank you, Dr. Shirk. Good evening, everyone. So in our world of education, we believe in lifelong learning. And for us, as a school district, student achievement is at the very center of that. But in order to get the most out of our students, of course, we have to help our teachers and provide them with the support and the learning that they need over their time as teachers. So we'd like to thank you, our school board, for largely supporting our teachers' needs in terms of professional learning. And one thing that we realize is that you often don't get to see the end product, if you will. You know you approve all these things, and then you probably wonder, well, what happens? They go, they learn, what happens? So we wanted to take some time this evening to show you just one example of something that you've approved in the past for some professional learning and what happened to it, so that you have some of that information in the background. So one of the things that we've been working on quite hard is text-dependent analysis. And this is a new strategy or some high-level thinking that students are required to do on PSSA learning in particular, but it is a good lifelong skill. And this requires students to really analyze text features, text structures, and then make inferences based upon using text evidence from some of their pieces of literature. So as you might imagine, our English Language Arts teachers, but really all of our teachers, are spending quite a bit of time on this because it's high-level thinking that students are required to do. So I'd like to introduce you to Mrs. Kathleen Woods. She's one of our instructional coaches, and she's in a unique role because she goes out for this professional learning. And one of the things that we always ask is, how is this learning going to be shared back in the district? Kathleen's answer is, I'm going to be in classrooms, working side by side with teachers. Mrs. Gem Forward is one of our sixth-grade English Language Arts teachers. She's also in a unique role because she got to attend this event along with Kathleen at her side so that they could bounce ideas off of each other. And then when they got back to the classroom, you can imagine the power of them working together to really transform instruction for our students. So with that, I'd like to introduce both of them, and they're going to share with you some of our fabulous sixth-grade learners, and they can share exactly how this learning has shifted what teaching looks like for us.
Please do. It would make me feel more comfortable. Good evening. If you guys could take a look at the screen behind you or beside you there. We've entitled this presentation Floating in the Sea of Analysis. We have an ocean theme here to present to you. Once the Common Core came along, the focus on analysis has really sent our teachers and students on a journey. And today, we're going to discuss with you the shift, the why, and examples from our sixth-grade students. I don't have it. Oh! Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, like my students, when Kathleen asked me to help her with this project, I decided to share the analysis with you through a metaphor, which is a type of higher thinking to explain what analysis was. So like the tides of our ocean, our way of teaching the students is also shifting. We no longer can just hang out in the low-tide pools along the shore in the comfort of basic comprehension. We have to have our students take deeper steps and swim freely with their own thinking. The answers right out of the text are no longer enough. Our students need to become more critical thinkers, answering the why and the how, and expressing the new information and what it means to them and the world around them. So basic comprehension, I like to think of it as testing the water, breaking the waves, cracking what was just there in front of them. But they're only standing ankle-deep in the water. We're not seeing what they fully understand or acknowledge. The analysis is diving deeper, going out beyond the breakers, getting into the different depths. And with the different depths comes their different life experiences. So how much they know or understand could be how deep they dive, different shells they pick up along the bottom. And hopefully, they're submerged and they are able to express the meaning in a deeper way than just what the text says.
And why the shift to analysis? The state wants to know that our students are college and career-ready and measures it by an essay. They want to know, can our students communicate effectively? The PSSA English Language Arts test, as of last year, the text-dependent analysis essay is worth 25%. So it is very important that our children have the strategies, that they're comfortable with this analysis component. Thirdly, employers rank complex problem-solving, critical thinking, and creativity as the top three skills in 2020. And we're about to show you some examples of such. Mrs. Forward's sixth-grade class was charged with reading a short story entitled in Chico and coming up with some visual text-dependent analysis, analyzing setting, tone, mood, or characterization. They had a choice. Here's Ms. Mariah to explain her analysis piece.
Hachiko is a historical fiction story about Hachiko and his owner going to the train station every day where Hachiko spends his day awaiting for his owner to return from work. One day, Dr. Owaino does not come back. Out of loyalty, Hachiko waits in the station for his owner for many years. The dog was so well-known that after his passing, the community memorialized him in a statue. This statue is a meeting place for loved ones to reunite.
And here's Miss Cece.
In my Hachiko project, the colors and setting affected the tone and the mood, and that is why I chose them. I also included the cherry tree on the side to show where the story took place, not just at any train station, but at a train station in Tokyo. The dog statue showed that many people cared about this dog, and even though it had a sad conflict, it turned out to have a positive outcome. One of my classmates chose to express his analysis in more of a visual way. He used sound effects to back up his analysis. We all have the same...
And this is Ms. Mackenzie.
We all have the same task, but we analyze differently. This ties into our ocean scene because we use goggles to see the analysis of others instead of walking in each other's shoes. Tasks like these help us build empathy for each other. When we see and hear each other's perspectives, we are seeing through others' goggles and how they analyze the text. We can see how experience, how others experience this story.
And here's their blackout poetry.
Blackout poetry is creating a poem from a text by crossing out words and lines in an article, leaving the reader with an analysis of the essential words to create a poem with your own creativity. While creating this masterpiece, I blocked out words that made sense and went together nicely. Also, I created a colorful background to back up my poem about elephants and their daily lives. This was challenging in two ways because in the article, I chose there were not many words that I wanted to use, and it took serious analysis to make it sound right in my head and aloud.
I chose an elephant because it's my favorite animal. The hardest part was choosing an article that I liked and had useful information. The one I chose had many facts. Figuring out the words is not that difficult because each paragraph had a topic sentence and statistics that I could analyze. I chose the most important words that made sense to me and that would entertain the reader, especially the part where it said elephants were scared of ants. The last part of the process was creating a title and picture that related to my poem. I love this part because I got to show my creative side.
My main focus is caring about nature and animals. I chose a word about turtles because I knew they were endangered, and I chose blackout poetry because I knew it was challenging. First, I researched articles, and I came across one about endangered turtles. I couldn't print it right away, so I used an app called Sketchbook and selected certain words. I chose words that were deep and meaningful and explained what was happening to these turtles. Once I got home, I printed out the article and boxed in the words to create a poem. Over the next few days, I practiced drawing turtles. Once I finished my final copy, I drew the turtle and watercolored it. The last thing I did was I created a title and a decorative header. Even though this was a challenging experience, I am very proud of my blackout poetry.
We want to thank the board and the administrators for all your support. The TDN analysis workshops have left us with a stronger understanding of what analysis is and looks like in our classrooms. Also, we swam away with many practical strategies and creative ideas that we can embed in instruction daily, and they have served as a lifesaver in helping our students better engage in analysis. Thank you so much. And thanks to our sixth graders.
Before we move on, actually, I want to commend you young women. Pots Grove is really in some good hands with you guys. That was excellent. And of course, the teachers and the instructor, that was just amazing. Very nice. Moving on to action items for personnel, I'd like to start with 5.1, and I'd like the board to approve the professional staff appointments as submitted.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we approve basically all action items, including 5.1, 2, 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, and a 5.6.
I have a motion to approve all action items in the personnel. Any discussion? All approve? All opposed? Motion carries? Action items, business.
Thank you. Moving on to business, looking at 6.1, Assessment Appeal Settlement Agreement, 6.1. The recommended action is to authorize Fox Rothschild to enter into agreement on the property located at 2200 East High Street in Lower Pots Grove Township, identified as tax parcel number 420001762005, set an assessed value of the property at $1,217,250 for tax years 18 and 19, and for the subsequent years until the change in the property assessment pursuant to applicable law.
So move.
I have a motion in the second for 6.1. Do we have any comments or discussions? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Moving on to 6.2, Telecom Audit. The recommended action is to authorize administration to enter into an agreement with Spyglass Group LLC for an audit of the district's telecommunications invoices as presented.
I have a motion in the second for 6.2. Any discussion or comment? Okay, vote, all approve? Any nay? Motion carries, 6.3.
6.3, Student Activity Fund. The recommended action is to approve the addition of a student activity fund at the middle school as presented.
I have a motion in the second for 6.3. There any comments or discussion? All right, I did that. What is this? I don't understand what this is.
This particular is the Student Coalition. This group was founded, I guess founded is the word, last year at the middle school with the help of the Upper Providence Police Department SRO. And it was a way for students within the school to sort of rally around one another for a cause, rally around the SRO, and basically do proactive initiatives throughout the year in a proactive way. And basically, they wanted to do some fundraising, Mr. Nestor, and to do that, they have to have an account with our business office. So we were asking that the board accept that as an account.
So Nestor, it's just a group of young students that pretty much just are doing good things for the community.
A little bit like student council, but it's not student council. They just got together under different circumstances.
Just real quick, this is one of our goals, is to get more activities for the middle school students, and I think this is perfect. I mean, you look at Pots Grove Pride, personal growth, goal-setting, social-emotional learning. This is all really what we needed at the middle school, and I think this is a wonderful way to start.
Any more discussion? All right. All say aye? Any nay? Motion carries, 6.4.
Moving on, School Culture Measurements and Improvement Software. The recommended action is we'd like to have authorized administration to enter into a service agreement with CATHM Education LLC for the licensing and installation of My Voice School Culture and Measurement Platform as presented.
I have a motion in the second for 6.4. Any discussion or comment?
I'll be voting no, just based on what I shared at the committee level.
How does this differ from the current surveys that you utilize with the teachers?
It's, this is more than a survey. In fact, the CATHM people don't want to use the word "survey." It's a tool that can be used to leverage the culture, you know, in a school building. And one of the things that has always been a goal of mine and of ours is to get a, take the temperature of a specific building. And what this does, based on research, with the 10 components of positive school culture, it allows us to dive into those particular pieces. Specifically, those cultures are clear and in unified direction. So a lot of these pieces are not only important factors for teachers to have a voice in, but also it's a tool for administrations to evaluate those pieces. Also, one of the culture pieces are professional engagement, instructional autonomy, which is very important. I think you saw some of that instructional autonomy here this evening. The collaboration component, which we talk about endlessly, but those, that collaboration component has been really huge for us in moving a lot of our programs forward in the last several years. The empowerment of teachers, feedback and reflection, what kind of feedback and reflection do they get with the classrooms, instructional feedback, artifacts, et cetera, there. Resources and priorities, you know, that takes a look at teacher schedules, schedules based on students' needs, instructional, selection of instructional resources, support and care. This basically covers the areas of how we mentor and how we grow our teachers internally. Sense of belonging, which is very important in any organization, and advancement, how do we do those pieces? And I think tonight, it was another good example of a couple of those pieces because our instructional coaches brought a classroom teacher along with her. There's a leadership tie there, and obviously, you saw that tonight with the students, how they brought that to the table. So we're really interested in, you know, part of this, the cultural piece, is creating a good culture and environment, retaining teachers, again, is of utmost concern of mine and ours for the standpoint that we're down 10,000 certificated teachers since 2015. So that is in the forefront. We'd like to use this also as a way to focus, focus conversation amongst our teachers and give them a voice, not just once a year, but maybe six times a year or four times a year. And basically, they have the opportunity to do that, and it basically, this tool will allow them to have their feelings ranked with these 10 collaborative components, as well as see what their colleagues are thinking as well. So if they're, if they feel that, for example, that they're not empowered, but the building tone or the building curve is that, well, it looks like pretty much the rest of, maybe that's something that I have to reflect on, but it also then gives our teachers the ability, our, excuse me, our administrators and myself and the district office staff, the ability to pinpoint these specific areas, especially in areas that would pertain to professional engagement or instructional autonomy. That could be a professional development issue. Collaboration piece could deal with any of the departments that we might have, but it's real-time, and we always talk about that with like our map testing. This is real-time analysis of the pulse of a building that gives them the opportunity to have the reflection piece and gives us the chance to evaluate that as well. So I think this, you know, the research that's been done with this, the data that ties to it, and the discussions that we can have, and there's no bias. This was done by professionals who use these cultures in the research, and the district didn't make it up. We didn't pinpoint specific areas, but allows us to have teacher input, no bias, and really helps us facilitate discussion. So I know that was a lot of information there. Mrs. McIntyre, sorry about that, but...
No, I wanted all that. Is this something that is on the teacher's laptop, you know, almost like a software program, and they go in there, or there are mandated times they go in, they go in whenever? As I did read that, they have the opportunity to change, it's essentially rankings, if I'm not mistaken?
Right, correct.
So here's what it is for me. I feel like, this is, I'm trailing off into my own professional career, and it's been a long day at work, but I value the conversations, and so I want to give the teachers every tool they need. We have, the professionals that we have are amazing. But I almost wish it could look like this, where they sit around, you know, maybe it's over a lunch break in the conference, you know, the conference room over the district building, and just have the conversations. I don't know. But you need the information too, so it makes it tough.
Right. And that's where I think, that's one of the pieces that I feel this will help us leverage those conversations. Because right now, the survey, we have a district survey that we've given out the last three years. This will be year three, so we'll really get some focused data on that piece, year three. And the other survey was really a faculty-to-administration on administration's leadership, because that was a big, that was a big area that I wanted our administrators to focus on how they lead. And I wanted them to take an honest look at themselves, and that's what it did. So this, to me, is a combination. It lets the building administrators see what the vibe and the pulse, because sometimes, yes, they do, sometimes they know, but they might not know some of the in-depth pieces. And the faculties of our 250 teachers really haven't had an avenue. And in the workshop the other night, I said, this is like our next step, because we've created a collaborative environment here in the district the last two years that I'm really proud of. That might be my most proudest point, that we have people communicating and talking, and this will just basically hone up some of those areas that we've maybe missed on and along the way. And if there are areas that we need to have conversations about, then we'll be able to do it. And this tool will allow us to start those conversations and focus as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So I understand the company doesn't want to call it a survey, but it is a survey. I mean, it is a survey that's going to cost $12,000 that we have no control over what specifically we're asking. There's no reason why we can't ask the same questions and more, or adapt it to what we know our needs are or what our culture is. It takes all control out of our hands. So just want to be clear, it is a survey.
Well, I, a survey, depending on what kind of survey, this is a research-data-based tool. You know, the people from the University of Pennsylvania and the University of Georgia spent years researching these 48 qualities of positive school culture. We haven't done that. I don't have that expertise. It would take me a lot of time to do that. The administrative survey that I used, I used Marzano's book on leadership research, and I took those components out of his book and used them because they were research-tested. And again, Mr. Parker, it's back to the bias point. I've done this enough and been part of organizations where you, they know what you're asking. This, Dr. Shirk didn't make these questions up. Leading researchers in educational culture, you know, curriculum instruction, integration of technology, a sociologist, they came up with these pieces. And from there, you know, back to Mrs. McIntyre, we can start those conversations. Like, this will give us a good, what did you mean by that? Well, tell us more. There is, help us understand those pieces. And really, it's 12,000 out of the gate, Mr. Parker, but it's the setup fees for the servers, for the in-service of our administrators is an upfront fee. It's $7,500 after that particular piece takes place. And, you know, if we could get this off the ground in the next month or so, it's really, they're going to do all this workforce upfront as well and bill us, you know, in the new year. So they're in cooper, you know, they've been cooperative that piece. And also, just to bring a couple of questions that were brought up at the workshop the other night, they are, they are looking into a dialogue box with the different culture drivers, the 10 drivers. From what I understand from the CEO, that there's like good infighting, that the researchers don't want to mess with the dialogue boxes because that taints the research when you start putting other things in there. The education pieces behind, the educators in this group want to see a dialogue box because they'd like to see things more specific that had educational components. But he did feel that the dialogue boxes would be coming, you know, that would be part of the new piece. And he also mentioned, and I just want to share this because, again, it's exactly that all the things we've talked about around this table for three years. This particular frame platform at this point will deal with administration and faculty. The research they're concurrently doing is for support staff and parents. So now you really have, you have the four spokes in the wheel, if you will, because when it comes to having a voice in that particular, in this platform of culture and empowerment, they're the areas that we need to concentrate on. Our parents, our support staff, faculty, administration, so they want to put together research-based study, not just, not just, you know, they don't want to just like pick some, pick some components out of the current piece. They want to actually do the research about what parents think. piece. They want to actually do the research about what parents think, what support staff think, and then that would, that would add, strengthen this program even more as well. So, I wanted to add those pieces, because I know there's a couple of questions that came out of our, our meeting the other night.
The, during the workshop, you made reference to this, and again tonight, you said about, you know, checking four, six times a year, but at the same point, it's real time. So, I guess I'm a bit confused with that still, because if the teachers can at any point, you know, hey, this last week, we saw some stuff that admin's doing, or students doing, or, you know, the government's doing, we're going to make our voice heard to make those changes. The whole point is that it shouldn't be checked every four or six times a year, but on a daily basis, I'm thinking. So, that's why, I guess I'm trying to understand if you're talking about two different things, and I'm merging them, or are they...
No, no, and I, your, your point well taken. Yes, it is real time, and decisions can be, can be made real time. I, I, I want to, I don't want to overwhelm anybody, so I, I don't have a, I don't have a true answer to that, other than my, you know, at this point, coming out of the gate, I would, I would probably rely on, on some of the, the inservicing that they would do for us about what would be recommended. I would want to at least have our administrators check it quarterly. I don't want it to be an excessive compulsive component of their daily work, but I think that, coming out of the gate, I think that I would, I would have teachers be able to feel freely to, to post their thoughts at any time, and then maybe have quarterly check-ins, you know, at, you know, as, as things go on. And I, honestly, I don't, I mean, I, I don't know until I get it and to see how, to see, you know, I mean, I, I...
It's a learning curve.
It's a learning curve, and I've only seen it on a PowerPoint, I haven't seen it live.
I, because I'm just thinking, if, if I had a concern, or I wanted to have, you know, have my voice heard, and it's, you know, I think you said it was an app on their phone, so go in and, you know, do whatever with the assured knowledge that in two and a half months, somebody will actually look at that. Doesn't make me feel like, well...
Yeah.
I'm just thinking that, I mean, I'm thinking that, to spend this money and know that it may not be looked at for months at a time, so I guess I should have this down again, as opposed to, I mean, obviously, you don't want them being obsessive about it, but at the same point, hey, we've seen a trend, and maybe the software does that, it gives you a warning that, you know...
Yeah, right.
But I just, if we're spending money, I want to make sure that it's actually being looked at to use, so that we're not reacting, but we're starting to be proactive.
Proactive, yeah. No, and, Mr. Lapp, great, great points, and I, and I, it makes me even want to have that, that tool in my hand right now, because I really want to be able to, to, you know, real time, you know, answer, answer those specific questions. I, I, I think it can be out of the gate used, and I think it can be looked at at a weekly basis. I don't know what the, the management piece would be, but you are absolutely right. That's what intrigued me about this, this program and this platform in the beginning, because it would give us real-time data on the, on the, on those, those called 48 culture indicators. So, yeah, I, I don't, I need to see it. Like, I need to see it. I, I think that there's, there's a piece there that I want to, just to be able to have the opportunity to play with a little bit. And maybe, and maybe we can, you know, maybe we, maybe we can.
I was just saying, to spend money on something like this where it's real time, then, in a way, it's not so much a survey, because you're, it's a constant growing living organism, so to speak. But if it is only checked every few months, then really, yes, it is a survey. So, I just, I, investing in it to know that it is going to be used, it's a key part there.
No, yeah, and that, and that's really, okay, Chuck.
Oh, yeah, as I'm learning more information about this, two things strike me. First is that this is not a quote "conventional survey," and this may be a novel approach that doesn't categorize itself in the traditional sense of a focus group or a survey, or any of the other opinion research methodologies. The other thought occurred to me, just occurred to me when you were mentioning the outreach that's anticipated to students and other, other stakeholders. And the question is, and maybe premature to bring this up, would there be an additional charge if we started to include parents and other groups? Or that, that may be too early.
It, it's, it's too early. Yeah, I, I know, I know we're getting, usually, I know originally it was a $2,000 per building piece. It's 1,500 building piece. I would think, once, once the platform gets established and they add to, I, I couldn't imagine it's a, I don't think they would do that. I don't, I don't know that. You know, basically, it's in the pipeline, so I don't know if that will be this year or next year either. So, point well taken. But, and I, and I appreciate your comments about a survey, because I, you know, it's not just a sampling of one particular time or one particular sample, or, or facts and opinions. It's, it's an ongoing process. And I, I think, Mr. Lapp, to your point, and I appreciate that, that we're going to use this out of the gate as much as possible, and not burden our staff, but to, and I would roll it out in the sense of, A, I would roll it out, number one, as they, as this is an opportunity for them to share their, their thoughts and feelings about the building that they work in, in an anonymous way, that the CEO, another, the CEO said unless he subpoenaed, the information would never be released. I know there's a, the anonymity piece that was brought up. So, so I did, I did, I did. So, that, that's the only way that any of that information would be released as well. But it, it would be used, you know, as much as possible without an overburden on the staff.
I guess I just have a question on these culture indicators.
Yes.
This is specific to our area. They've done, what is this, every school's culture inventory, create a rating for each school culture driver? This is specific to this area, not the inner city, or a more affluent area, or a rural school district?
It's, it's, it's educational cul, educational culture drivers and indicators.
Even though every district is distinct upon themselves?
Yes.
And this is more in-depth than, let's say, a team leader speaking to their team and running it up, chain of command, building administration. This is real time, and how are we going to police that? I'm just unsure about that.
Well, we're unsure about it. I mean, I mean, as far as, as far as, as far as the tool goes, there's a base, the initial, the initial piece is that our administrators will take a baseline because of this, the baseline indicators. So, so our administrators will get a feel for where they are. Then the teachers would take a baseline indicator. The goal would be before they leave for the school year, so they have a, a full year fresh in their mind. And then we would, we would analyze the differences between our, our teaching staffs and our teachers. And then the next steps would be, on the rollout would be to, to talk about this again in August when they come back, and then roll, roll that piece out as a real-time, sorry, real-time way to, to give feedback to our administrative staff. And it can be done on their, on their phone, as a, as an app as well, or on their laptop, desktop.
You had mentioned, and then, and then Scott was just asking, it's research-based, it's research regarding school culture. But I feel very confident in your understanding and background with school culture, but even more unique, because this survey, this real-time survey, is global school culture. You have that aspect, but you also have knowledge of our school culture, where they don't. Another separate, separate piece, separate comment, you know I like surveys, but I like surveys when they're used right, which you do use them right, and I know you would continue to do that, but also where feedback can be given. So, I'm rating this, you know, such and such, two out of 10. Why a two? So, your surveys can do that, and I know they're looking to potentially do that in the future, but that's not where they're at now, if I'm understanding your, what you're seeing as far as the, the box.
No, they, they, they are, no. The, the box piece was just being able to write a specific comment. They do give ratings on all the categories. So, in the, in the information that I, that I gave you the other night, every, every driver on school culture does get, does get a specific rating on, on the teacher, on the teacher page. So, the examples that I gave there for, that night was, you know, if there's clear and unified direction, that, that scored a, like a 4.2. But if there's an issue here, as an example of empowerment, or, excuse me, or feedback, that, that was down to a two. So, that, that would be, the teacher would get a rating, and the overall building would get a rating. So, that would start our conversations. What's, what's the concern? You know, that, that conversation would happen in team leaders, building leadership, departments. They'd have an opportunity to, to dig into those pieces a little bit more thoroughly, but what, what those, what those issues are. It would start those conversations. It would allow us to focus. And, and another piece, again, it goes back to, and again, I've heard it around this table, getting teacher input and be able to know what that is. You, as a board, would have, you would be shared this information. And again, you, you, we could decide how much, you know, how often do you want to see this? Do you want to see this monthly? Do you want to see it every six weeks? Do you want to see it quarterly? Do you want to see it semiannually? You know, that would give you the opportunity to, to take a look at, at those particular characteristics throughout the year as well. So, it's going to give you the feedback of what's going on in our buildings, just alongside of us as well.
Um, me, over here. No one can see me over here. Thank you.
Thanks, Ma.
Um, I, the, the feeling that I'm getting, sort of, now, I'm trying to sort of take the pulse of what everyone's saying here. Would it be possible to get a demonstration of this in some way? Maybe have one of the, you know, one of them come out and show us? I mean, would that sort of help, I think?
Maybe show us how many the admin portion is, like if it is a five seconds, you can get the pulse, or is it 25 minutes every day, if you really want to do it, or what?
It's just hard to sort of grasp it purely on paper.
Right.
Um, and it is not cheap to start it up. So, I mean, maybe for that kind of startup, they would be willing to send somebody. I don't, I, you know, I, I know one of them's from Penn, so obviously, that's not too far.
Right.
And, and the second thing was, would it be possible for us to get sort of like some kind, if we decide on this, to get some kind of schedule as to when the different, maybe schools or groups of teachers or something will be pulled together and, and almost in, maybe like a workshop type of thing, you know, so we could know that it's definitely being used the way that it was presented to us. Not that I question that you won't, but I'm just sort of trying to take in what everybody's saying here, and...
Well, a couple of things. I, I think, you know, asking, asking Cato Education to come out and give us a demonstration, I think that, that's, that would be purposeful. I think that's, that's something they'd be willing to do. So, I think that's a good idea. As far as, as far as the pieces of this, I've been looking at this, I said, I mentioned in the workshop, I've been looking at this for months. So, if I, and I, if I didn't feel it was something of value to us, I'd never, I wouldn't bring it here. I'm not, I'm not just, I think you, I would hope you would know me well enough by now. I'm not just shotgunting things off to you. In fact, I don't, I don't even know, this is probably the first, the first thing that I brought to you personally, that I didn't particularly, I didn't handle myself. I mean, the district survey went out, and I did, you're right, Mr., I did put things together from a lot of other district surveys that, that, that pertain to us. I did use Marzano's Leadership Research Survey, but this piece seemed to be a non-threatening, non-bias, research-based, educational-led platform that would give us real-time information that best reflects the culture in our buildings. Maybe that's the best way I put it all night, so I don't, so, so that, that's what, that's what intrigued me the most about it, as, as that particular piece and tool. So, so that's, that's really, you know, my take. And everything I've done, I've done with, you know, with thoughtfulness and thoroughness, and this would be no different. In fact, I would take the lead. I would be the spokesperson, you know, as I do for a lot of things we do in a district. I go out to the buildings. I introduce things. I talk about the new, the new initiatives, and then the building leadership follows up, you know, and then we, we go from there. And then I come back and recheck, if you will. So, you know, I appreciate that. I don't mind it. That's, that's important to me, that you know that you have someone here that's going to, you know, basically, lead this process through myself, and so that it does have the due diligence that, that you're asking. So, thank you.
Yeah, real, real quick, quick question here. You've made it clear that it's afterwards, it's $7,500, I believe, annually. If we were to do this, and we, and we didn't like it, and we discontinued it, would there be a penalty, or would it just be that we'd stop paying the $7,500?
And it's on June 30th, 2020.
Yes, so if we, if we, if we adopted it, let's say tentatively, and didn't like it, we could still get out, and there wouldn't be any severe penalty?
Yeah, I mean, if, if we signed it, I, we probably signed it for the, but if they didn't do any work on it before, I don't, I think they would probably allow us to exit.
I think it's just the renewal piece, and we can address that with them. And your point is, I, you know, I'm not being clippish about this. If we lose the $12,000, I don't want to pay $7,500 the rest of my life, I think is what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's a, it's a one-year contract, 15-month contract, whatever, if we, if we renew after that, if we...
Okay, because it sort of impacts on the decision of whether, whether we want to defer this or not, if there's a big downside penalty. You understand my point?
Did you actually get a chance to see this in action?
Only on, on paper.
Do you, so, I like too the idea of possibly having them come out, so that you can see it.
Sure.
Because maybe once you start working with it, you'll think, you know what, I can do this just as well, because your surveys have been really good. So, you know, that's kind of where I'm at, with it. Let you be able to drive for a little while and see, you know, is this really going to do what they say? Because, you know how that goes, you know? And if you still feel like this is the tool, this is going to give me what I need to empower my staff?
Right.
Great.
Is, it seems that the board would like to see maybe a presentation before voting on something that's going to cost $12,000 to start, and then $7,500 each year for running continually. Obviously, I think everybody here can feel and appreciate the passion you have on bringing material like this. We definitely need this kind of material to help continue our culture and continue that way we want to build with it, for our team and all. So, if someone would like to make, make a motion to table this, while we get some more individual, I'll, I'll open that up.
Second.
Table. We move to 7.4.
Could take a vote.
Thank you.
6.4.
6.5.
Five. Agreement, 6.5.
CLIU 21 agreement for services.
I make a motion to be approved, 6.5.
Question? Does this happen at, at CLIU?
There's a, there's a motion, a second.
Sorry, I was talking to Mark for a second. There is a motion and a second. Go ahead for discussion. Go ahead.
Yeah, does this 6.5 require students to go to the CLIU, Carbon Lee High County, an immediate unit in Schnecksville?
The IP contract with Carbon Lee High IU, do they go to Carbon Lee High?
They don't. Carbon Lee High IU actually provides services in a local institution for adjudicated youth. So, any Pots Grove students that attend...
We don't have to, we don't have to worry about, because that's an hour drive.
Or more.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions? All right, vote A on 6.5? Aye. Any nays? Motion passes. Okay, I apologize, as I spoke to Mark, because we had a motion and a second on 6.4, and then a table, we do have to vote on to table it. So, I'm going to open back up 6.4.
And then no debate or a motion to table?
Correct. There's no discussion. It's just a straight-on vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes to table. We'll go to 7.1.
I make a motion to combine...
I make a motion to combine 7.1 to 7.4.
Motion in a second to combine all seven items in education. Do we have any discussion or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes as a whole. Go to 8.1.
8.1, it's the Policy Committee. We're asking the board to accept the minutes for the Policy Committee held on February 26th of 19.
Motion in a second, vote all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, 8.2.
Facilities and Operations Committee, we're asking the board to accept the minutes for the Operations and Facilities Committee that was held on March 12th, 2019, as submitted.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, 8.3.
8.3, it's a report of the Athletics and Co-Curricular.
I'll do the report, unfortunately Patty was a little under the weather, so we couldn't do that. So we discussed a bunch of things in a very short period of time. So, one of the things that we discussed that we're going to be bringing to the board at a future meeting is going to be the Give Back Program. So what we're looking at as in the Give Back Program is something that the, the students will have an opportunity to earn additional ribbons for graduation based off of how many community hours they've put in. They have to narrow down, we're still in the works of that, we have to narrow down how many hours per year and different things like that, but they're also going to have an opportunity, not only scholastically to earn ribbons, but also community-wise to earn certain ribbons for, and this will be yearly, they could earn up to four ribbons if they started this all the way back in their freshman year. This would not be for this year, obviously, because we are just getting it in underfaced, and so beginning next year, and we want to get everything out, they'll bring it to the board probably in the next meeting or two to approve something like that.
Are we introducing that to our eighth graders coming up?
The freshman class, yes. Yes. Yeah, for freshman class.
So, yeah, yes, the eighth graders as well.
Yeah. All right, the second part, we had a little bit of discussion. All right, this is the annual report. Now, everybody, most everyone on this board, except for Patty, was not here when we actually got rid of the Community Newsletter. And I understand the board at that time decided that the Community Newsletter was something that they didn't want to do, that the expense was just too much for what we were sending out. So that went by the wayside.
They felt you could do it online there.
Correct. And now, obviously, we don't have, everybody can go online, and there's a very large percentage of our community and stakeholders that actually are not, have students or hear or anything like that. So the thought was, we definitely want to get something back out to them, but we don't want to be spending $12,000. So, how do you do this without doing that? So, Mr. D'Renzo came up with an idea to have an annual report that we would send out once a year. The annual report was beautiful. I thought it was very elegant, very professional-looking. It was actually done mostly in-house by different individuals. We've had a lot of eyes look over everything, and obviously, it's going to also include not only recaps of the different buildings and recaps of some of the positive things that happened in Pots Grove, but it's also going to have the budget, so that the stakeholders can actually see where the budgets actually go. That was in the process of being mailed out, I believe, this week. I got yours today, so we even got it, so. And because we're doing this more in-house and actually going through a mailer that is kind of out of state, which I felt was interesting, it's actually going to only cost roughly about $43, $4,400. So that's going to be something that we're going to be obviously looking at. Next was, then we went to the athletic part. Obviously, we actually do not have a protocol on heat and cold when it comes to outside. Obviously, we have, there are different things there, you know, how active should a student be in playing a sport when it's below freezing? Or how active should they be when they're out in the tennis court and it's 90 degrees out there? So, what they did was, Mr. Omsbach and the Athletic Department put together, and they looked at other different schools and everything like that, to get everything pieced together to make sure, so they're actually looking to make sure we have the protocols in place to cover our students when they're in the excessive heat or the excessive cold, and that's going to be obviously rolled out immediately. You have any questions? Go ahead.
Will that apply to games as well?
We did not mention games.
Because I'm just wondering how, if our, you know, if we have it at 90 degrees, we don't, but another school has no, I mean, do we forfeit then, or so?
Well, there's a certain particular temperature, let's say it's 90 degrees, the game could be called beforehand. So, yeah, so I'm not exactly sure as to, if it, I think they would actually look on that weather bugs and such as to what the temperatures are going to be. They have the ability to look further. Same thing with lightning, how far lightning is and everything like that. So they would actually call the game before we got to that point.
Okay.
So, all right. The next part we discussed was, and we'll be bringing this, another piece to the board as a whole, for approval in the coming months or whatever, it's going to be to create the Athletic Hall of Fame for Pots Grove. So we're going to be putting a plaque and a different piece item down in the athletic wing. The cost is roughly around $1,200. Obviously, it's going to be, there's a whole committee that's being formed, obviously approved by the board, to actually decide who's going to be in there. It's consisted of athletic, it's consisted of parents, it's consisted of the booster clubs, it's consisted of odd individuals to make sure that we're voting for the right individuals that we want to be considered as our Hall of Fame. Obviously, this is something that we're going to be working on, as well as getting more into the alumni. We do not have a strong backing, I believe. And same thing with Mr. D'Renzo, is we need to get back to the community, we want to also get back into that alumni, you know, get into that ties and such, and bring them back to our school district and such. Then, of course, then the last couple of things we discussed were, of course, the Pots Grove Education Foundation is going to have its 5K run on May 10th. This run will be a color run, which is a non-toxic color powder, is thrown in the air, and runners run through it and cover their shirts and legs. I don't know, I've never been through something like that, so I have no idea what it is, but it sounds definitely different. So that's going to be something, as I was going to say, they expect that they're going to have about 150 runners and walkers to go and do this. So I said, okay, sounds interesting.
I have a question, Mr. Leach, I have a question. Would this be the year that you, in fact, give that a try?
Yeah, sure. I don't think you'll see me doing that. Okay. And lastly, what we discussed, as remember under the board, obviously, we were looking to have not only the athletic students and the student athletes under a co-curricular guidelines and such like that, we also want our co-curricular students to have to follow the same guidelines. The pilot program has been started, and so far, it's going over very well. The teachers have been very receptive, the students have been very receptive. We've had no issues at all, and so we do see that this is going to be out of the pilot stage and in full force come next fall. And that is the Athletic Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Turning it over to Curriculum Integration Technology, we have a report.
Would be me. All right, we had our meeting last Tuesday. I'm going to skip over the first part, which was Cadem. I believe that Dr. Shirk already gave us a very thorough description of that. So, the next thing that we did was, we talked about adding an accelerated science class into the middle school. Right now, we don't have one that quite fits the needs of some of the kids that are very advanced. So, Mrs. Pacino and Mrs. Delina were there, just letting us know that it needs to be offered, or that there is a need for it, and just how they would go about it. A middle school biology teacher will partner with a high school biology teacher and just get a class started down there for the kids that are ready to take biology in eighth grade. The cost would be $720, and we need to look at whether there's enough biology lab kits for the eighth grade up here in the high school, and if there is, that we'll just move some down. The next thing we talked about was the Act 158 guidelines. There is multiple pathways that the state has now suggested, mandated, and it's all still a little fuzzy as to what's going to happen, when and how much input the district itself has in it, but it's basically giving kids the option of having other graduation requirements other than the Keystone exams. They can still use those as a graduation requirement, but they can pick alternative pathways to get to graduation status. So there's still quite a bit of discussion going on around that, because the state is still unclear on quite a few things. We need to define cut scores, we need to figure out what composite scores are for the Keystone. Lots of stuff is still up in the air. But we will continue having discussions about it, and at some point, hopefully, it'll all be decided and figured out what kind of scores the kids need in the different areas to qualify for graduation. Goes on and on and on, which it will probably change in a year or so, knowing the state. Anyway, that will be on our next agenda also. The next thing we talked about, Mr. Bickert presented us with something called Class Link, and that is basically almost like a menu that the kids and teachers can have on their laptops and their iPads, that gives them all of the apps that they might be using for all of their different classes, they would all be in one spot. And that way, they can just tap or click, and they get into that program rather than having to type it in, worry about passwords and stuff like that. So it's all sort of all-encompassed in one page, and will make life a lot easier for everybody involved. The last thing we talked about was the curriculum renewal process. We're on track. Our next ones that we will be looking at will be 6 through 12, Social Studies, Technology Education, Media Library, and Music. And we will obviously be talking in, more in length about that at future meetings. The end.
All right, I'd like to bring up new business. May I ask a little?
All right. Okay, so I forgot at the last meeting to bring up the Read Across America, that both Ringing Rocks and Lower did Read Across America but on separate days, which really worked out great, because that means I got to do both. So, they did a great job at both. Ringing Rocks actually had a two-hour delay that day and managed to still work us all in. And at Lower, it was great. I actually, my daughter was home on spring break, and she asked me to schedule her to read also, so she went in and read to her fifth-grade teacher's class, and absolutely loved it. But I just, real quick, got to share a really funny story. So I was at Ringing Rocks, grades one, K through two, and I was reading a book, I don't know if any of you are acquainted with it, but it is called Officer Buckle and Gloria. And I brought that with me, because that is one of my most favorite books from when my kids were little. Officer Buckle is a police officer, and Gloria is his police dog. And Gloria does things behind Officer Buckle's back that he doesn't know about. That's what makes the book so awesome. So I'm reading the book to the, I had, I think, three or four kids, reading the book to the kids, and I turned to show them one of the pages, and the one page was Officer Buckle was buying ice cream, and Gloria was standing behind him, the dog, signing autographs. And I said something to the kids, I said, isn't that a funny look? You know, Gloria's signing autographs. And one of the girls goes, she can't do that. I said, right, I know, she's a dog. She goes, no, she doesn't have opposable thumbs. And I stopped, I was like, how old are you? And she said, I'm seven. I said, okay. So anyway, I just had to share that, I got a real kick out of that, and we have some really smart kids down there in second grade.
Thank you, I won't be able to top that, Mrs. Custer, so. What I would like to talk to the board tonight about, and I think head nods will be sufficient, maybe a vote, Mr. Leach, I'm not sure. I would like, I would like the board to allow us to move forward and commit to French. It's coming up on April. We need to market our program. We need to get a teacher that is going to sell this thing to the nth degree. We have 66, we have 66 current students signed up. That would be three sections at the high school. And then, we'd need three more sections of the exploratory, or one, actually, excuse me, we'd have exploratory built into that as well as Level 1. So that doesn't guarantee that all the students at the high school will get French one, but I think that we're at a point where it was built into the budget, Mr. Nester built into the budget, and we really need to market it, that we need a high flyer, you know, go get our French teacher to come in and start this program up from the bottom up and just get after it. And I don't, and I don't want to, we can't do it in all, we're not doing ourselves any justice at that point in time. So, I know, Dr. Harney, you've been at one college fair, you're going to a couple more, you have a couple other things in the works, plus, and I think I said this to the board when we started this process, it might cost us a couple extra bucks to get the right person who has some experience, because, you know, someone, I'm not saying someone out of the gate can't do it, but, you know, to get someone with, you know, a couple years of experience, has started a program already, I think there's some value to that, you know, with the kids. But the interest is definitely there at the middle school, it's definitely there at the high school, and if we delay this and wait till the end of the budget season, then I am concerned about, you know, starting it up in September or August, on the right foot. So, I just wanted to, you know, give you, ask you if you are willing to make that commitment tonight or within the next two weeks. If it's something that you can head nod and think about, we can do that in the next two weeks. I really want to get our HR team together so that we can put a real good marketing strategy together to get the best person possible for this job. So, thoughts?
Couple questions. So it sounds like the numbers justify a full-time position for French. What are the numbers for the other languages? Have they gone down, and are those positions no longer justified based on the projected enrollment?
And I'll, I know Dr. Ziegler's ready to talk, but I, what, the meetings that I've had with Dr. Ziegler, they haven't, they haven't dropped off substantially. There's a few pieces, a few sections that are lower, but with the startup of the encore pieces at the seventh-grade level, to basically have those integration pieces, exploratory, it's going to fill a lot of those gaps. What I wouldn't want to do, also, Mr. Parker, to your question is, the numbers, at this point, support all of our staffing. I wouldn't want to just look at someone to lay off at this point, this early in the process. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be fair, it wouldn't be fair to us to do that. I don't feel, I think we need to go through this process a year and see, or two, and see how the numbers shake out. And then, if there's a trend, if things trend, you know, any particular one way or another, then we can make that decision in a year or two. But I would not want to do that, because we're starting, we're enhancing our program, I would not want to, you know, have another program not be fulfilled because we're playing a numbers game. I don't think it's warranted at this time, to be honest with you. But I think it's something we, I know Dr. Ziegler, we talk about it, we look at it, and, you know, you always say, like, you know, sometimes competition is good, so I think that will help our overall program as well.
I was just saying, my understanding is also that there are some students that are taking it as a second new language as well, so there is no loss. In fact, that's, I think that's fantastic, really commends.
No, we had a discussion about this last time, but obviously, the numbers dictate that they do want this. And like you said, I don't think we should underfund it. I think if, we want this to succeed, and from what I understand, the last time it dropped off is because we probably didn't handle it right. I think if we're going to do it, we need to really commit to it.
All right, the only thing I'll say, unless you have one more comment?
Yeah, two things. If we're talking about moving forward, I think we need to do a vote, is my suggestion, and not a head nod. Second, you mentioned it's built into the budget. Built into the budget with a two-point, I forget, something percent tax raise, correct?
Two-one.
Two percent tax raise, okay.
I, I, what I, what I, I, there's no strong arm, I just want to.
All right, I'm gonna cut you off, because I know what I'm gonna say.
Thank you.
In regards to that, I do agree that with you, that the Board would like to vote. I'm not a fan on voting on anything if we haven't had the public had a chance to at least be on the agenda and stuff. This is one of those few times when I would say, this is something that's that important that maybe we do need to, and I do have a good pulse of what the Board is leaning on this way. Before that, though, I want to ask, does anybody in the public, the administrators? Can I have the motion first?
Well, I mean, we have to open it back up if we're gonna take action, something wasn't on the agenda, so that would be the opportunity to open back up when there's a motion, we would open it up to the public.
All right, then I'm gonna ask Mr. Nester to answer his question in regards to the money.
We started out the budget process with a 2.1% tax increase. Mr. Linky and I have been, spent the, most of this afternoon actually working on updating the budget. We're not completely done. There are some things, such as tuitions, that we anticipate will go up. But at this point in time, due to some additional savings we were able to reap in our healthcare programs, we're now sitting at a 1.5% increase. That does not include any of the retirements that we hope, hope to have. It does include the French program, but there are, there is the possibility of tuitions rising. We've seen some, some transactions in that, in that regard, we just haven't quantified that, that component yet.
All right, I'll ask the Board, would anybody like to make a motion to approve French being as an agenda item?
I'll make the motion to approve French.
Okay, since we have a first and a second, before that, I'm gonna open it up to the floor and the media. Do you guys have any questions in regards to this particular new motion that was not on the agenda?
Do we have to ask them in French?
Yes, you have to ask them in French.
Give a little bit of France.
I get it. All right, and I'm gonna open it up for any additional discussion or comment. All right, then, all those in favor of voting for French now being approved as the third-world language and the expense?
And the, the program, the exploratory program.
And the exploratory program as part of the middle school.
Question. Is it proper for this motion to be introduced at this time without advance notice? And this is just a procedural.
Yes, I agree a hundred percent, Dr. Nipper, I do not like making motions, especially that are not on the agenda, because I like to have the public and such like that. The only reason I'm gonna accept this one to make a motion, and we've made some in the past, is because of the importance of getting this solved once and for all for the district, to make sure we have the correct people in place if we're going to spend this amount of money. So yes, we can.
To Al's point as to whether a Board wants to do that is a different issue. Legally, you have a perfect right to do it.
My question is purely.
That's why you have to open it up to public comment, because the sunshine law does require, before you act on anything, it hasn't received public comment. That's why I said to Al to open it back up.
Yeah. All right, is there any additional comment or questions? All those in favor of including the French and the exploratory program?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Abstain.
We got it. Two no's, one abstain. One, two, three, four, five. Five, two, one. Bob, unfortunately, is not here. Motion passes still. Any other new business?
That's all I have. Thank you for your support.
A lot of you have been working with us for three years, but you know what, I think, you know, it was a thoughtful process, and I think the end result is that, you know, we're gonna do a good job and have a good product for our kids. So I'm happy to say, we have, you know, we have an enhancement, you know, it's an enhancement to our, to our world language, it's an enhancement to the district, so thank you all for your support.
Does anybody else have any new business?
There was just one other thing I wanted to bring up. I don't know if you all are aware of the issue that happened at Pottstown on Sunday.
I'm not.
You're not?
I've been out a little.
You've been living in a cave?
I caught a little bit of it earlier.
Okay. There was a bullying incident that allegedly escalated to gunshots being fired at the child's home. It's all over the news. Pots Grove was on the news because of it, because this, the girl's mother said that everyone was telling her to send her child to Pots Grove to get her away from this crowd of, of kids. Now, I'm only hearing one side of the story, obviously, so I, you know, I can't make any judgments either way. The one thing I just wanted to make clear is that we have to take a very strong stance on bullying. I don't know if we need to strengthen our policies on bullying, cyberbullying, but something like that, I mean, that's our next-door neighbor. We cannot allow something like that to ever escalate in our school. My heart goes out to that girl and her family. I can't even imagine if what has been, if what they claim is happening has been happening, then it's been a nightmare. She was threatened on Instagram, you know, and then, and then eight shots were fired into her house. Luckily, nobody got hurt. So I just wanted to take that chance to just say, you know, we gotta do whatever we can, and I know it's difficult now because of social media, technology, but we really have to make sure that we are making every effort to keep our children as safe as possible.
Very well said, and I'll just say that ironically, tonight at Policy, we had our second meeting regarding updating our bullying policy, and it is, correct me if I misspeak, but it is a stance of the committee that the district does a superb job in being watchful of, being proactive and reactive when necessary to bullying, but it is, it is the feeling that not even one incident's okay. So always wanting to look at, do we have the most up-to-date programs? Are we doing all we can do? So the, the policy in its stage now has really had some significant changes, I would say, that just goes along with what you're saying, because absolutely, what's happening in Pottstown with this one individual is just horrendous and not something that we want to see happen to anybody, any of our students or our neighbors and friends.
I'll open the floor again. I'm Dr. Eber, sorry.
No. This can come under, under comments, but I just wanted to remind everybody that the middle school is performing Chitty Chitty Bang Bang this weekend. Those of us who are old enough to remember the movie are in for a good treat if you have the time.
Thank you. And before everybody leaves, would anybody in the comments like to make any comments and such? I get the gall, yeah. All right, first, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. You guys all have a great evening.